All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council regular council meeting at the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per city of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. I'd like to now invite everyone who's able and willing to join me in a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you very much. Next up is item number four, meeting minutes. This evening, I will be assisted by Vice Mayor Adams. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to vote or to approve for A1.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams to approve item 4A1. Do I have a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Aye.
Okay. Councilmember Hodge?
Aye.
Okay. And that passes unanimously seven to zero. Next up, item 4B, acceptance of board commission and committee meeting minutes. Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve 4B, A through, I'm sorry, 1 through 7.
It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams for the approval of items 4B, 1 through 7. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item also passes seven to zero. Next up is item number five, Mayor's Reports and Announcements. So first of all, I wanted to just talk about item 5A1, which is the presentation of the Education Forward Arizona's Childhood Learning North Star Award to Tempe Pre. I also know that Councilmember Keating was also accepted this award on behalf of the city council and the entire city of Tempe, so wanted to thank him for this, who has been a huge advocate for this program for many years now. I just want to tell you, we're really, really, truly honored to get this award from Education Forward Arizona and grateful for our longtime partnership with the Tempe Elementary School District to provide high-quality preschool right here in our community. Tempe Pre launched back in August of 2017, and since then, we have served almost 1,700 children ages three and four. Not only are they entering kindergarten more prepared for success than their peers, but their families are thriving as well. Some actual really interesting bullet points I can also talk about that are really key statistics when people ask how well this program is working in our community. 69% of our respondents tell us that access to Tempe Pre has improved their family's financial stability. 68% said a family member was able to return to work or increase their work hours, therefore earning more money. 15% reported they also obtained secure housing, and 12% also noted that they returned to or enrolled in school. So I'm very proud to say that the unique partnership between the city and Tempe Elementary is making an impact statewide with Tempe Pre serving as a model to many other communities. I'd like to also recognize Erin Hart, who's here in the audience as well. I saw her earlier. Where's Erin? Yes, she is. So Erin is the Senior Vice President of Education Forward Arizona. I'd like to bring her up and see if she would like to say a few words and see if the council would also join me downstairs for a picture when Erin's done.
Mayor and council members, congratulations. This is the first time we've ever given this award, and to bestow it on the city of Tempe is such an honor because we've been just in awe of the work that has been happening with Tempe Pre for a long time and been big fans of the work. So we're so glad to share this with you, and congratulations.
Excellent. Thank you. So council, could we join Erin down at the front? And actually, if we can also have our education staff come forward as well to be part of this picture. I see Naomi and Marie, please. Come on down. All right. Item number 5A2 is the US-60 Communication Awards. So our communication and marketing office consistently demonstrates excellence in what they do each and every day, and they particularly seem to shine when it comes to high-profile events, projects, and emergencies. This past spring was one of those times. In the early morning hours of May 7th, which I know we all remember, a 24-inch city water transmission line near the US-60 and McClintock Drive broke 25 years before the end of its expected lifespan. The freeway was flooded and its asphalt surface damaged, causing the need to shut down the US-60 in both directions for about three weeks. The Arizona Department of Transportation estimates that 170,000 vehicle trips passed the area each day, and that means hundreds of thousands of commuters, visitors, and workers had to find new routes until the extensive repair could be completed. Alongside the highly skilled professionals within Water Utilities and Transportation and Engineering and Tempe Police, the communication and marketing team sprang into action on day one and didn't stop for three weeks until the freeway was repaired. They worked together with city experts, ADOT representatives, and contractors to provide frequent, accurate, and timely information to Tempe residents and regional commuters. Their main goal was to ensure motorists had the information they needed to alter their commutes, all while showing that the city of Tempe cared and understood the inconvenience of the difficult situation. The team produced many videos, sent dozens of emails and social media posts, established a dedicated webpage, and held several press conferences, all resulting in literally millions of views across all of those communication tools. The communication team is quick to point out that they couldn't have done these things without the very capable on-camera help and technical expertise of Mark Weber and Tara Ford from Municipal Utilities, Julian Drieseng from Transportation and Engineering, and all of their respective staff members. As you can see, I was also proud to declare May 23rd as US-60 Workers' Day in acknowledgement of all those who worked round the clock to safely reopen the freeway. Okay, so now for the hardware. The communication team took home two very impressive awards this past September. The Phoenix Chamber of the Public Relations Society of America bestowed them an award of merit, and I just wanted to say too, by the way, this same organization also recognized this same team back in 2021 with its highest honor for our city's COVID-19 communications. And the National City/County Communications and Marketing Association, which is also known as 3CMA, gave us their top award, which is called the Savvy Award. The Communication and Marketing Office prides itself on being a genuine team with every team member lending a hand in any type of crisis or communication effort. Tonight, we are joined by four of those team members, so I'm going to see if they can stand when I call their names, just because I want to, I got to now embarrass everyone. Jason Wolf. Eddie Garcia. Chris Baxter-Ging. And last but certainly not least, Nikki Ripley. If staff can join us down at the front, and council, let's go take a picture. All right. Item number 5A is a proclamation for Veterans' Brain Health Awareness Day. And that proclamation reads, "Whereas November is a time reserved to honor and thank those who have served our country, many of whom returned from active duty with leadership and teamwork skills that make our communities a better place to live and work; and whereas for some, acquiring those skills have led to permanent or temporary cognitive challenges; and whereas with more than 480,000 military personnel having suffered traumatic brain injuries, and with over 600,000 troops having been diagnosed with post-traumatic stress in the past 20 years, awareness of these challenges must be raised for Arizona's veteran population of over a half million and growing; and whereas thousands of veterans and their families are living without proper diagnosis or support for family caregivers; and whereas recognition is owed to those brave men and women who have served our country and are now recovering from the invisible disability of brain injury; and whereas grateful appreciation goes to organizations like the Brain Injury Alliance, who are here to serve our veterans, now therefore I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare November 15th, 2022 as Veterans' Brain Health Awareness Day in Tempe, Arizona." Next up, item 5A4, which is Law Enforcement Records Personnel Appreciation Day proclamation. And that reads, "Whereas the law enforcement records professionals of the City of Tempe Police Department work tirelessly to collect, assess, organize, preserve, and provide access to records that have lasting vital value to our democratic legal system and community; and whereas records personnel assist community members, law enforcement officers, professional staff, and local, state, and federal agencies; and whereas Tempe PD Records, a small group of employees, field a staggering number of often complex calls, over 2,600 calls monthly and 31,000 calls annually; and whereas records personnel fulfill public and law enforcement records requests, access and maintain criminal history records, processing over 7,000 public records requests annually; and whereas Tempe Police Records elected to pursue national certification through a lengthy painstaking process converting to the national incident-based reporting system, the FBI's data standard, to promote more informed and detailed policing data; and whereas the safety of the Tempe community and the goal of the Tempe Police Department greatly depends on these services and the dedicated professionals who daily provide them, now therefore I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare November 3rd, 2022 as Law Enforcement Records Personnel Appreciation Day in Tempe, Arizona." Next up, item number 5A5, which is the City of Tempe Enhanced Services Commission and Judicial Advisory Board Appointments. I just want to congratulate Jarrett Brock on his appointment to the Tempe Enhanced Services Commission, and Judy Aldrich on her appointment to the Tempe Judicial Advisory Board, as outlined in item 7A1 on tonight's agenda. Next up, I'm going to look to our city manager for item 5B, which of course is the aforementioned City Manager's Reports and Announcements. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I have no announcements tonight. Thank you.
Just when I turned my mic off, Andrew, and I turned it right back on. Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, item number six, public appearances. I've got a few cards here, but I would say first I got to read this statement. So according to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, "The city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. Public appearances shall be limited to an aggregate total of 60 minutes. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Councilmembers are prohibited by state law from taking action on commenting or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific agenda item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda." Let me see here. I'm going to go to my cards here. I think the first one I'd like to do, which I received first, was from Joel Cornejo, who's the Executive Director of Samia's Arizona. And I think, Carrie, you have a card from here. It's Carla to read to the record.
Yes. So this is from Joel Cornejo Orjedo, Executive Director at Samia's Arizona. I want to thank Mayor Woods, Rosa Inchostee, former councilmember QB, and all those who helped through this process. Our communities have been suffering from gentrification for a long time now, losing homes and businesses. This move by the city is a message to our barrios that you all care and that you are listening. This purchase is not just a win for those businesses, but to all the communities that depend on it. Once again, thank you all, and I'm looking forward to working with you all.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Just a quick note, too. We've got a couple of folks. I just read some proclamations, and I was just informed that people are here from those groups to come down and take photos. So after we finish the public appearances, we'll go back to the agenda and invite those groups up. So I apologize for that. I was just informed, so. All right. Next up here, I've got a couple of cards. So the first card I have here is from Michael Allen. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the city council.
My name is Michael Allen from Cast scan, Arizona. This complaint is against the Tempe Police Department, incident number 202265629. This is the reason for the complaint. Three of my sons was in Tempe area on June 19th, 2022. Tempe Police Department stopped my sons with guns pointing at them. It was no reason they should have been stopped. There was a sod it taste many a times and put in jail. My son suffered a brain bleed. Tempe Police Department failed to get his head examined and failed to give my other two sons medical attention. Tempe Police Department violated my son's rights, and I'm requesting Tempe Police Department be investigated and get retrained for excessive use of force, help with resources for damages done to citizens, body cam being held up to six months to a year. That's too long. That needs to change. Internal Affairs report being held 180 days. That needs to change. It's too long. Tempe Police Department is violating citizens' rights and needs to be investigated. The Tempe Police Department, our captain, can't explain what happened to my boys, and we want answers. Also, body cams and internal affairs reports are being held. My son's rights was violated. The damages that were done to my sons is serious, and they did not deserve what happened to them, or the trauma. Tempe Police Department need a lot of changes and help, and I'm requesting my complaint be investigated and changes be made in that department. Also, I sent an email to all the council members and got no response, so I'm here in person to say it for myself.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Allen. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have here is Zaid Torfa. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the city council.
Hello, everybody. My name is Zaid Torfa, resident of Phoenix, Arizona. I wanted to speak today regarding the proposed land acquisition by the city of Tempe regarding Agenda Item 7A3. My family owns Haji Baba, a Middle Eastern restaurant and grocery store currently located at 1513 East Apache Boulevard. We were founded in 1984 and have been serving the city of Tempe since then at the same location, making us one of the longest-tenured restaurants in the area. For those of you who are not familiar, we are a hybrid grocery store and restaurant. Our restaurant focuses on Mediterranean cuisine and has won countless awards, including the Best Middle Eastern Restaurant in Arizona as recent as 2022, Best Vegetarian Restaurant in Arizona, and Best Lunch Spot in Tempe. Our grocery store provides exclusive ingredients and spices from all around the world and gives our international customers a memory of home, while also giving an opportunity to our American customers to travel abroad while staying right here in Tempe. Earlier this year, after 38 years, our landlord mentioned to us that they were going to be selling the property at a price that was not feasible for our small business. We met with our other businesses in the plaza and started to identify a plan. Within a week, we had a meeting with several members representing the city of Tempe, including Mayor Woods, members of city council, and Rosa, Deputy City Manager. Through this meeting, we were able to explain the situation at hand, brainstorm, and give the community a channel to voice their concerns. Over the next few months, it was made clear that the city of Tempe was going to make an attempt to purchase this property in order to give us the opportunity to continue our operations in the city we call home. Special recognition to Rosa and Maria, Deputy Economic Development Director, for keeping us updated throughout the process. On behalf of all of our employees and customers, we really hope the funding gets approved so that we can continue our relationship with the city of Tempe and continue building lifelong memories with this community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next speaker I have here is, let's see, make sure I get this right, Tolga Yalchinkaya? Wow, thank you. All right. Please come on down, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the city council.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Tolga Yalchinkaya, resident of Mesa, Arizona. I am here to represent Supercarne Serie Don Filos. We have been doing business in Tempe on Apache Boulevard since 1998. After the railway was built, we relocated our store to 1533 East Apache Boulevard at year of 2015. We have been doing business in Tempe for 24 years. We are Latino-oriented store that sells Hispanic products. First of all, I would like to thanks to our community for their support in our business and our neighbor businesses, Haji Baba and Vietnamese restaurant. I am thankful as Don Filos Market to our mayor Cory Woods and city council members for coming to our store and listening to our community needs and trying to find the solutions. I appreciate them for their support. Thanks again.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. The last card I have here is from Michael Wallace. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is Mike Wallace. I live in Scottsdale, Arizona, and I'm here regarding Agenda Item 8B1, which is the Perry and Rio Apartment Complex that I'm sure you're familiar with. I own a building that I lease out within a couple hundred feet of this project, and I've talked to the folks at planning a couple of times, and I've been to several meetings about the Smith Hub that this area is in. There's actually two apartment complexes, but this item only concerns the one. The big concern and other people around, my tenants especially in the building, I lease the building out, is the street parking that's down there now. Anyone that goes down there during the day now and sees this realizes that street parking is absolutely pushed to the max. And of course, they're requesting here with the PAD overlay that the 112 less parking spots than the city code requires. They have their own third-party independent studies that they've gotten that justify what they want, but that's 112 parking spots on this project alone, another 100-plus on the other one, 233 total. Once that one's built in there, within 300 or 400 feet of each other, it's going to create a huge overflow of parking into the street. And the plan is to make street parking permitted on both sides of Third Street and both sides of Perry Lane, and it is already permitted on both sides of Industrial Drive. So I think it's going to be a real detriment to the businesses down there, not only the tenants in my building, but all the people in that immediate area. It just seems like the developer could increase his parking by just going up another story of parking. This is a podium build, and he's doing three layers of parking now, levels of parking, one additional level of parking, certainly would not put him over the maximum height requirement, I believe is 130 feet. I think he's only at 90 feet now. And that would be what I would submit to the council and hope that planning would take another look at this and move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Really appreciate it. And council, I'll note this item's on the agenda later, and I know the applicant is here this evening, so if we have questions about this item, we can definitely ask them then. So, but thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Before I close this portion, I want to just check and see if there's, is there anyone else in the audience this evening who wishes to address the city council? Please get my attention. Yes, please. Come forward and state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Woods and council members. My name is Shannon Hayes. I am a resident of Gilbert, Arizona. I'm here on behalf of Black Mothers Forum of Phoenix, Arizona. We as Black mothers will no longer remain silent while our children are blatantly disrespected, intimidated, provoked, stripped of their humanity, threatened, and criminalized as a result of being young and Black, especially our Black sons. The unprofessional conduct of a few City of Tempe employees, specifically police officers, has created a hostile environment for the Allen family here in the city of Tempe. The misconduct of these officers does not reflect the city of Tempe's mission and values, specifically when it comes to integrity and respect. We are here today requesting justice for the Allen family in a city led by its first Black mayor and Black police chief, which as a native of Arizona, I'm very proud to say that. But we are requesting today for the restoration of human dignity that your police officers stripped away from three young Black men who did nothing more than ask the questions, "Why are you stopping me, officer? Why am I being arrested?" Instead, their questions were met with profanity and brutal blows to their bodies. They were treated as if they had committed a crime when in fact they had done nothing wrong. What we want is a formal apology to these three young men from the city of Tempe. We want the officers removed from the streets because they are unsafe for ours and your community. We also demand to see the unredacted body worn cameras, and we want these young Black men to receive the justice that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close that portion of the agenda. Council, let's, I want to go back and do exactly what I talked about earlier. If I can have the folks here from the Veterans' Brain Health Awareness Day, please come forward, if they're here. No, they already leave? No? Okay. All right. Well, then, let me go to, do we have folks here from PD, from the law enforcement records? Please come forward. And council, if you can join me.
Thank you guys for what you do. Yeah, you do a great job under difficult circumstances. Purple? Yeah.
We've got a lot of folks here. Let's join in.
I'm going to go play Dre.
You come here and then you scooch in. There we go. And then let's have you scooch just a little bit. That's good. And then she can come in. Joel, sneak right up in here. That's pretty good. All right. I think we're good. There we go. That was great. All right. We got everybody here ready. One, two, three. Wait a second.
It did. It did flash. Mm-hmm.
More. One, two, three.
He's getting his steps in.
I don't know why I didn't bring it with me.
I got to do one more.
Got to do another one.
I'm here on behalf of Black Mothers Forum of Phoenix, Arizona. We as Black mothers will no longer remain silent while our children are blatantly disrespected, intimidated, provoked, stripped of their humanity, threatened, and criminalized as a result of being young and Black, especially our Black sons. The unprofessional conduct of a few City of Tempe employees, specifically police officers, has created a hostile environment for the Allen family here in the city of Tempe. The misconduct of these officers does not reflect the city of Tempe's mission and values, specifically when it comes to integrity and respect. We are here today requesting justice for the Allen family in a city led by its first Black mayor and Black police chief, which as a native of Arizona, I'm very proud to say that. But we are requesting today for the restoration of human dignity that your police officers stripped away from three young Black men who did nothing more than ask the questions, "Why are you stopping me, officer? Why am I being arrested?" Instead, their questions were met with profanity and brutal blows to their bodies. They were treated as if they had committed a crime when in fact they had done nothing wrong. What we want is a formal apology to these three young men from the city of Tempe. We want the officers removed from the streets because they are unsafe for ours and your community. We also demand to see the unredacted body-worn cameras, and we want these young Black men to receive the justice that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the City Council? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close that portion of the agenda. Council, let's, I want to go back and do exactly what I talked about earlier. If I can have the folks here from the Veterans Brain Health Awareness Day, please come forward. If they're here. No, they already leave? No? Okay. All right, well then, let me go to, do we have folks here from PD, from the law enforcement records? Please come forward. And council, if you can join me?
Thank you guys for what you do. Yeah, you do a great job under difficult circumstances. Purple? Yeah? Marching?
We've got a lot of folks here, let's join in.
I'm going to go play Dre.
Let's have you come down. And then let's have you scooch just a little bit. That's good. And then she can come in, Joel sneak right up in here. That's pretty good. All right, I think we're good. There we go. That was great. All right, we got everybody here ready. One, two, three. Wait a second. It did flash?
Mm-hmm.
More. One, two, three.
He's getting his steps in. Oh.
I don't know why I didn't bring it with me.
My fault, my fault for the long night.
No, we haven't.
One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Got it.
Thank you. Chief, who should I? Stay here.
Stay right here.
Ah! There we go.
Congratulations, guys. Nice job.
Congratulations.
All items listed on the Consent Agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the City Council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as "public hearing item" at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest, and if a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the city clerk prior to the Agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. The Consent Agenda this evening is listed as miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A6, awards of bids and contracts, items 7B1 through 7B18, and resolutions, items 7C1 through 7C8. Once again, any item designated as "public hearing item" can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, please get my attention now. Seeing none, I will ask the clerk's office here, were there any comments received from the public wishing to address the City Council on a Consent Agenda public hearing item?
None, Mayor.
Thank you. Next up, I'm going to move to my council colleagues. Are there any other Agenda items that you'd like to remove from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration? All right, hearing none, then I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve the Consent Agenda. It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. And that motion passes six to zero with Councilmember Keating absent. Next up here, we're going to move forward to item number eight, NonConsent Agenda. All items listed on the NonConsent Agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Council members who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the council members with a disclosure form. First item under the section, which is miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions, is item 8A1, which is to approve a one-year contract renewal with United Healthcare to provide group Medicare Advantage plans to eligible city retirees and their eligible dependents. Council, any comments or discussion?
Watch your mouth.
All right. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A2, which is to adopt a resolution approving the acquisition by the city of Tempe of certain improved property at the addresses of 1511 through 1537 East Apache Boulevard for the future use and the development of affordable and/or workforce and/or a mixed income and mixed-use development and authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement to acquire. Council, any comments or discussion? I have one quick item. Oh, one quick item. Just wanted to just, once again, thank you to the speakers who came forward this evening. It was the people who have been running some exceptional businesses in our community for many years who spoke up when this concern first arose about the owner wanting to sell the building. And so one of the times, one of the things I always say is that many times people want the City Council, they want city government to do something, but they don't necessarily tell us what's going on. And the thing that I most appreciate about the people who own the businesses in that plaza was that they did speak up and make it very clear that they would like the city to intervene if we possibly could, which we're ending up doing right now. I also wanted to thank a couple of people, too. First of all, our Chief Deputy City Manager, Rosa Nchau Stino, who's not here this evening, but she spent a lot of time working with me on this project. And also to former Councilmember Lauren Cubey, who was actually the first person who told me about this. The first council member they went to was former Councilmember Cubey to let them know about this proposed sale, and she was the one who brought it back to myself and Rosa, and so we began to have the conversations with the businesses in this plaza. So really, just wanted to make sure I thanked the both of them. And just really quickly as well, just wanted to say, when we talk about the city's hometown for all strategy and the work that this entire council and the city of Tempe continues to do on matters of affordable and workforce housing, I still believe that we are head and shoulders above other communities when it comes to the commitment to this issue, whether it's creating a dedicated revenue stream, going out and acquiring property that might be available on the commercial market, or even many times doing the environmental remediation to make sure that we're giving the affordable housing developer clean dirt, and also making sure that we're in compliance with our Native American land acknowledgement statement, which is to make sure that we are taking care of the land that indigenous people first occupied. So I wanted to say really clearly, I think the work that this city continues to do is truly top-notch, and I want to thank our staff. And I just want to thank the city of Tempe for always not just going out there and talking about doing something on affordable and workforce housing, but actually in this situation and many others, really putting your money where your mouth is. So I will conclude that statement. Any other comments? It's been moved by Councilmember Chin. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item passes unanimously seven to zero. The last item under this section is item 8A3, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Regional Public Transportation Authority for the purchase and supply of mobility transit services for fiscal year 2022-23. Council, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, do I have a motion on item 8A3? Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second? Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote. And that item passes unanimously seven to zero. The next section on the NonConsent Agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for December 1st, 2022. 8B, once again, ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. The first item under the section is 8B1. That is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from GID to MU4, a planned area development overlay, and approve a development plan review consisting of 308 units, including four live-work units, and 3,069 square feet of commercial use for Perry and Rio Salado, located at 1891 East Rio Salado Parkway. The applicant is Gamage &amp; Burnham PLC, and I see Manjulavas from Gamage &amp; Burnham in front of us. Good to see you this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good to see you.
Is there a presentation you'd like to provide on this item?
Yes, I have a brief presentation, and then I will certainly talk a little bit about the parking. Oh, thanks, Chase. Oh, that's Wendy's. Yeah, I can do Wendy's presentation. Like, I'm kidding, Wendy's here, she'll do it.
When do you want Manjul to handle those two while we're here?
While I'm up here, I'll handle Wendy's.
She's like, knock yourself out, Manjul.
Yeah, no worries.
Item 8B1?
Again, for the record, Manjulavas, 2 North Central, Phoenix, 85004. I'm here today on behalf of Four Property, the property at Perry and Rio Salado. So just briefly, Four Property, as you may know, is a full-service, multi-family developer. Developed a couple of projects, ones on Apache we did a while ago, it's called, now it's called Sky at McClintock Station. At the time, it was Tempe Tiempo. We've also done a couple of projects in downtown Phoenix and one in Midtown by Park Central. And this is going to be very similar to those types of projects where you're kind of urban. I'm going to talk a lot, a little bit about kind of the Smith Hub guidelines. We really want to appreciate all the work that Economic Development has done with us, with Jill and Mbika and Donna, and helping us kind of do the design for the project. But if you look at the Ray in downtown and Centra, which are projects, if you drive by, so you'll see a similar look. This one trying to meet an industrial look. So there are actually two projects, and they're done in different phases. We have two projects on Rio. Today, we're just talking about Rio and Perry. And early next year, I'm going to come and talk to you about Rio and McClintock. So you can see that one's in the yellow box. Today, it's the red box, we're going to talk a little bit about. So this is what the site looks right now, and I think you've probably driven by it in terms of kind of what Rio and Perry looks like. The request today is do a zoning map amendment to rezone from GID to MU4 with a PAD and a DPR. And as I mentioned, we're going to talk a little about, this is in the Smith Innovation Hub. I know you all know a lot about it. We've spent a lot of time looking at the guidelines and try to meet the design of the guidelines, and I hope you'll see that kind of in the industrial look that we've done. And also add a lot of landscaping to this project, but just keeping kind of examples of our guidelines in line with the project, kind of keeping the grit. One thing that this project does, and we'll talk a little bit about parking, the Smith Hub supports car-reduced living, walkability, and transportation options. Soon, there will be either a streetcar line, light rail line running by it, so we want to be cognizant of that. There's a shade network, urban heat island reduction. We've added a lot of landscaping, kind of mixed-use, street infill that we adhere to. We have green building, green infrastructure, and kind of promote integrated spaces for artists. Just briefly, the site is as a projected land use of mixed-use and projected residential density of up to 65 dwelling in Sneaker. So let's just talk a little bit about the project. The project's 308 residential units. We, for those 308 residential units, we have 464 parking spaces, which is more than one parking space per bedroom. And I'm going to show you a little bit more about that, which that is a little higher than I would typically put in the downtown, kind of in the urban center. This is not in city center. This still keeps within the kind of suburban residential parking standards that you would find in South Tempe, so we've kind of tried to meet that halfway. But we have, you know, parking ratio of 1.5, almost 1.5, so 1.46, so which is a pretty high parking ratio kind of in this area. We have over 3,000 ground square feet of street-level retail. We have 1,100 square feet of office space. You'll see like fitness levels, and I'll show you, we have a lot of landscaping, substantial landscape enhancements, certainly different than what goes, what's on there right now. But as I mentioned, we have 464 spaces for 308 units. We have four spaces on-street for Perry. We don't have any parking on-street other than our just new four on-street spaces in Perry. Everything is parked in the garage. For the residents, we have 1.46 spaces per unit, which is 1.1 spaces per bedroom. And then you'll see in the retail, we have one space per 3,300 square feet, and then the office space, one per 300 square feet. So in terms of kind of just using some general metrics, if you look at kind of what the institution of transportation engineers say, we would have a surplus of 151 parking stalls versus kind of where we are. Urban land institute, we have greater than 67. If at some point the city of Tempe applies the TOD standards, when we bring the light rail over there, we will have more parking than would be required by TOD. And so what we've tried to do is find a good mix. We have more than one unit per, for all the units. We don't anticipate anybody using any parking on-street. For the businesses that are down there, you know, these are going to be reverse commuters. I mean, no one's going to use parking, but you know, the people who are living in the apartments will be going out, hopefully using, honestly, there's a lot of options. You can use Orbit, that's right there on Smith, use Orbit, or the bus driving at Tempe Marketplace. We have a lot of bike paths there, and then plus, they have, they will have park, more than adequate parking for the cars. I've included a letter from the Economic Development Department, which I spent a lot of time working with, saying that they believe that the parking reduction is reasonable given the site is directly located adjacent to future planned expansion of transit and the future streetcar route. And then just briefly, wanted to show you the landscape plan. You can see we have a, we've kind of expanded, we have a fully landscaped, attached sidewalks. We have a lot of nice landscaping, big trees. We'll get into the, this is the kind of the unit mix, first-floor amenities. But I think this is where you really see kind of what we're trying to project in terms of kind of cool, modern architecture. Have a nice balcony. We have plantings on the second floor as well as the first, and then you have both nice walkability and landscaping all the way around. It's kind of four-sided architecture, nice blooming trees. So that's my brief presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vaz. Any questions? Councilmember Navarro, then Councilmember Garland.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, and just at first look, I do enjoy the industrial design, so to speak, with the product. I also enjoy the wraparound deck areas on each of the levels, which is something I've been trying to hopefully embrace a little bit more with developers, to have a little more open space with the development as we see in some other communities and some other residents. I think just having that outdoor ability, especially when it was like this, you know, for like seven months, it's great to enjoy that. When we come to parking, I know that the gentleman was stating down the street, there's parking that's being used on the street as is. This project is just for residential. Is there retail on this project or?
There's retail on this project, but there would be parking for the retail in the garage.
Okay, so there'll be retail established? Okay.
Yeah, we do have four just like teaser spaces on Perry that don't exist now, but other than that, we'll be parking everybody in our garage.
And just on the landscape design, if you are doing something like this, I like this with the trees going down Perry. I do like that. It looks very lush, but I want the same thing.
Yeah, no, we're going to work on it.
Don't tease me on this.
No, no, no teaser trees. We're going to put real trees.
I'm just saying. I like what you're doing. But the other thing is also to make sure that we're also kind of just, you know, blending in some of that streetscape that, across the street, obviously, with, yeah, Marketplace. We really, I think we can enjoy the fact that that's a real neat alley, a neat pathway, just as we go to Marketplace, going down that with future streetcar. I mean, let's make sure we're doing it right, for sure, and we're kind of integrating some of those features possibly and making it blend in nicely.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Let me go next to Councilmember Garland.
Hi. So I appreciate the gentleman who came and was talking about the parking. Looking at the numbers and looking at the presentation that you gave us earlier, it does look like you are within a really good number for the parking spaces, but I still think maybe there's possibly something we could do a little bit more is, can there be something that be given to the residents when they come in there that says, tells them that they can't park on the street? Something extra that we can
Of course.
try to help the gentleman who was just speaking about that. The other thing is, I don't know if it would be then the city doing something like saying it's just a two-hour parking or something on the street. I just, I want to be able to accommodate because I understand if you run a business and you, that's where your business people, that's where your customers park, and you can't get in there because residents, I can see how that would be very frustrating. So I'd like to try to find a way to alleviate that for him, if that's possible. The other thing is, and I was thinking about this the other day when I was looking at your EV parking, and I'm going to ask the same question of Wendy when she comes up. You know, I know, just sitting on council for a couple of years, I sit here and Lauren, you know that Lauren would always ask you about solar.
Yes, yes.
Well, she's not here anymore.
Yes.
So I want to make sure we're still thinking about solar, but in a certain way. For me, I would love to be able to see, find some way for our, when we're doing these EV parking, can we at least get solar on the roof that will charge the EV, the cars? I just think that we've got to start taking steps someday to start getting solar in there. We have to start doing something. Honestly, I've been in my house for 21 years, 22 years, and we are just now putting solar on our house. So I'm just as bad as everybody else. But it would be nice for us to try to find some way if we're to get that, if we're going to truly do EV, and we know the reasons why we're doing EV, if we can use the solar powering. So just a thought, I'd like to be able to see something like that if that's possible.
Okay, we'll talk about it, and then we'll come talk to you.
I appreciate that. Thank you. And as Councilmember Navarro said, I really like the look of the building, so I appreciate that.
Right, thank you.
And I think that's all my questions. Oh, one other thing I did want to say, I'd love that you don't have any entrance or exits onto Rio Salado, that they're on the side streets. I do like that because it cuts down on the, makes it safer for the pedestrians and the cyclists and people going by there. So I just want to say I really like that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my understanding that the parking is not necessarily on the street is not legal? Is that?
Yeah, I don't know how much, that's probably a better question, economic development, which we can come and talk to you about. But I think to your point, maybe Councilwoman Garland's point, you know, I don't think anybody's going to be parking, but for the residents, they won't necessarily be there during the day, so hopefully that will also avoid some of those parking. I think, you know, there's some of the people are parking on, you know, maybe on the sidewalk, and some of the landscaping has gone down, so I think economic, we're all working on that.
Okay, yeah, so it's my understanding. Also, we recently talked about the green building initiatives, and so anything that can be, I'm a volunteer right now, but anything that can be added to that, that would be helpful. I love the project, it's a really good project.
Okay, so, yeah, we're using the green building codes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. All right, anyone else? Any other comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Chin, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Vaz.
The project looks, it looks very nice. I think it really activates the area. And I'm going to follow Councilmember Garland's comments about looking at solar, but we should, we should branch out a little bit when we're looking at shade, right? I think when we're planting trees, we want them to survive. But I think it's time for us to look at other options. In addition to trees, it could be some solar devices or using designed or engineered devices. The objective is shade and however we get to that. So I'm open and flexible with the types of shade.
Okay, yeah, and we'll come talk to you a little bit about the design of the buildings.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Chen. Any other comments?
Thank you.
All right, hearing none. Thank you so much, Ms. Vaz. Appreciate it. Okay, now I just want to see if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on this item. If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Just want to reiterate, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for December 1st, 2022. The next item under the section is 8B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt a resolution for a general plan of projected land use map amendment from public open space to mixed-use for approximately 1.66 acres, projected density map amendments from no density to high density for approximately 1.66 acres, and from medium to high density, to high density for approximately 3.39 acres, adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from GID-RSOD to MU4-RSOD for approximately 5.04 acres, a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, and a development plan review for a new seven-story mixed-use development consisting of 319 dwelling units and commercial use on 5.04 acres for Madera Rio Solado, located at 835 West Rio Solado Parkway. The applicant is Barry Riddell, LLC, and I see Wendy Riddell right here in front of me. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Wendy Riddell with the law firm Barry Riddell. My pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of Madera Rio Solado. So we are here today on behalf of Hardy Rio Development, which is a collaboration here between the Howard family and Mill Creek Residential. I have Mill Creek Residential with me here as well. The mayor gave you quite a mouthful. We're requesting quite a few things tonight.
I did think that was a rather long introduction idea.
It was a rather long introduction. You did it very well, so I'm not going to repeat everything that's on here. There's quite a bit that we're accomplishing here with this application here tonight. As just council knows, this has actually been a little while in the making because this property itself was the subject of a development agreement that we did with the council back in 2021. That development agreement proposed the various types of land uses that I'm here showing you tonight. And of course, the purchase of this property will be transmitted to the City of Tempe Coalition for Affordable Housing, Hometown for All. So when you look at this site, this aerial was back in 1986 when the Traffic Operations Center was here even longer than that. And it has changed quite a bit. Rio Solado Parkway has changed quite a bit. At the time, this sort of utilitarian use made a lot of sense. And as we look at Tempe today, it really is a gateway into Tempe, and it's got a significant amount of change that has happened and a lot of really great things happening. And this proposal we have in front of you tonight responds to that very change. You see, of course, the Carvana headquarters, lots of discussion about the potential entertainment district, the Idea Campus, the TCA, and then of course, quite a bit of additional intense multifamily that's to our east. So very contextually appropriate what we're proposing here tonight. The site itself is five acres. It's currently GID Rio Solado Overlay District. We are, of course, requesting the MU4 PAD, keeping the Rio Solado Overlay District. We're looking at 319 residential units. It's approximately 63 dwelling units per acre. There is roughly 3,500 square feet of commercial development that we're hoping and working on a potential restaurant that would go there. We are also providing the 14-foot transit easement that will be dedicated along Rio Solado Parkway for the future streetcar expansion. One of the things, and I just raised this because it caused a little bit of confusion in the posting, the general plan designation on a small sliver of the site is actually open space. But rest assured, we are not eliminating open space. The open space shown on the general plan map is actually Rio Solado Parkway. So we're really just clearing up that open space designation and showing it for what it is here today. You can also see the density that we're proposing, how again, it's very contextually appropriate. And then the development plan, you see, we're ranging in height from five to seven stories, 60 to 85 feet. The very maximum height is actually an elevator shaft at 98.8. There are still some setbacks. We are, you will see that parking along Rio Solado Parkway because of the water line easement that exists out there today. So that really dictates that we have some of that surface parking. The rest of it, of course, is in a garage. Again, you'll see here, because parking seems to be a little bit of a theme tonight, we are parking at a 1.4 ratio here, including the commercial. We also wanted to point out the shade ratio. So we're actually, for the public walkways, we're providing 50% shade where 33% is required. And the same for the parking lot, where you're required to be at 20%, we're actually at 78.8% shade. So significant amount of shade that we're able to accomplish here. Give you some idea of what it will actually look like. So for Rio Solado Parkway, you can see that the street state will be activated. There will be parking here in front. And you can see the varying roof line that we're providing here as well. And again, a little different perspective, a little bit further down, but it gives you a good idea of what we're proposing. And then looking down Hardy, you see how there is a step back. You see the restaurant, retail there at the corner, and then the entrance along Rio Solado Parkway. So with that, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And we look forward to being back in front of you in December.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ms. Riddell. Appreciate it. Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. Excellent. I love the project. And I know the late Wayne Howard will be looking down on this smiling right now. And so that's just, it's exciting to finally see this go forward. And I just really appreciate your tenacity with making this happen. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Anyone else on council? Let's see, Councilmember Garland, then Councilmember Navarro.
Hi, Wendy.
Hello.
So the EV parking.
Yes.
Solar. Is it possible to get solar to run our EV parking?
So Councilmember Garland, I can tell you, we are planning on 10 EV parking spaces. I'm going to give you an answer very similar to Ms. Vaz. Give us a chance to step back with my clients and look at that and then come and visit with you about it.
Okay, and I'd really love to have more than 10. And I'm just thinking about the future. So many people are getting EV cars, that it would be great for you to kind of prepare for that. It would be wonderful if you had more than that.
Hard to argue when I pulled up in my own electric vehicle tonight, so I understand.
I do the parking lot out here. I'm not, why, Andrew, we need EV parking outside.
We will be back to you later.
And I thought when I looked at this, when I was looking at the documents that you gave us, I actually looked at that open space as that front section of the property that had all those crazy lines and things underneath it. You can't do very much too. So in my mind, I didn't think about that as open space. I thought of that as crazy spaghetti underneath the road. I mean, underneath that part of the property. I really like the design. I like what you're going to be doing here for the multifamily. So it looks good to me.
Thank you. We'll get back to you on the other.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Wendy, looks good, great design. Probably all the information you're gathering here, one of my things that I'm trying to harp on also is just more of that balcony space. And I've seen kind of like in the front picture right there, if there's ability to make that kind of extend around a little bit or what does that look like? I don't know if that's something to consider, but once again, it's the effects of just having that balcony space of the, with our outdoor activity and the weather that we do have majority of the year, in my opinion, just to kind of accommodate with newer residents that are coming in here. And I think it's just one of those things that adds value to not only the residents, but even adds value to the look. So just something to.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmember. We will, and I'll get, they're pretty healthy balconies, but let me get back to you with those dimensions because you have raised that and I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. Councilmember Hodge.
Do you have, oh, first off, thank you, Wendy. Great, great presentation. Yes, and also rest in peace, Mr. Howard. He was really good, really good man. Do you have, is it going to be like working, living space? Like, is it going to be places that people, because the more people are working from home? And I just want to know. I should have asked that in the last one, I forgot to. But I'm asking now, is there going to be workspace, living space?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Hodge, there is a place within the community itself that people can work. So it does provide that opportunity.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Any other councilmembers, comments, or questions? Seeing none. Thank you, Wendy. Appreciate it.
Mayor, Council, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Speakers have up to three minutes to address the council. If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. The second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for December 1st, 2021. The next item under the section is 8B3, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from Ag to AgH Agricultural District with the historic overlay property designation for Guadalupe Cemetery, located at 4649 South Beck Avenue to facilitate the designation of Guadalupe Cemetery and the Tempe Historic Property Register. The applicant is the town of Guadalupe. Is there a presentation on this item? Is there anyone on the webex by chance? Oh, yes. There we go.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Carl Herrig. I'm the Tribal Historic Preservation Officer for the Posco Yaki Tribe. At the request of the town of Guadalupe, I have been working on doing National Register and Tempe Register nominations for the Guadalupe Cemetery. So. So just briefly, the Guadalupe Cemetery is located at 4649 South Beck Avenue. That's about a half mile or so southwest of the intersection of US 60 and Interstate 10, and is now surrounded by residential communities. There's a map of the location there, just east of Arizona Mills Mall as well. The Guadalupe Cemetery was actually established as the original townsite of Guadalupe right around 1898, when the Diocese of Phoenix of the Catholic Church purchased five acres there and encouraged Yaki settlers to come together there and to establish a community. They did so. That site was also, and is also, sort of in the middle of the Hojocum Village site of Ciudad de los Ornos. And in fact, the cemetery and that five-acre lot was immediately adjacent to a platform mound that was still extant from that Hojocum Village at the time that the Yaki community first settled there. And here's a photograph of that. I was thinking from 1928 by Frank Midville, from the corner of the cemetery, looking at the platform mound, which had a house on it that was a non-Yaki home at that point, someone who was just named as a cotton figure. But previous to that, there had been Yaki homes all around there, including up on top of that mound. The Yaki community remained there at that site until about 1910. This is a photo from 1909 of the church that was located at the southeast corner of the property. In 1910, the, and we don't know precisely what happened, but what we've kind of deduced was that there were conflicts with surrounding landowners because of the fact that the, that the community of Guadalupe had spread out beyond the five acres that was owned by the church. And the, that land was coming on to the availability of use for agriculture with, with the expansion of the irrigation canals. And, and so the, the community was actually forced to move away from the five acres and to the, to the new townsite of Guadalupe, where the town of Guadalupe is now. This is an overhead aerial photography from 1930, which is the earliest aerial photo we have of it. You can see the cemetery at the bottom left of the photo, and then the Hojocum Platform Mound that was still standing there, just to the up and left and right from there. Here's a wider view to give you an idea of what, of what was going on. The, the new Guadalupe Townsite, which is now the town of Guadalupe, is there in the bottom-left part of the photograph. And then at the, at the very top, near the center, is where the cemetery is located. And then just one more view with the overlay of contemporary streets that we have now. Showing that there. So why we're asking to recognize the Guadalupe Cemetery? It's an important place for the Yaki and also the Mexican-American community of the town of Guadalupe because it is the place where, where folks have buried their loved ones for, for over 120 years now. But also because it's a place of active community remembrance and celebration. In fact, yesterday was probably the biggest day for the cemetery, Dia Deus Muertos. There are many families go to the cemetery to spend the day commemorating their loved ones. There's also religious practices that are taking place. There's, from the town of Guadalupe, there are Matachina dancers who come and bless the site. And so it's an active and living place that has continued to be in use. We, we completed a National Register nomination of the cemetery. It was approved by the State Historic Preservation Office Historic Sites Review Committee back in July, and it's been forwarded to the Keeper of the National Register at the National Park Service. We have not heard back from the keeper, but we do expect that it is likely to be approved as a, to be listed on the National Register of Historic Places. We completed the nomination to the Tempe Historic Property Register at the same time. And so we've been working with the city Historic Preservation Office and other folks for a number of months to put this forward. In the National Register nomination, which is more detailed, of course, than the city one, we nominated the register under criteria A, which is association with the significant events in the history of the, of the area, region, and criteria D, which is the property has or is likely to yield important information about the history. We see the cemetery as being significant as a, for exploration and settlement, it being the first, the first settlement of Yaki people during the historic period in the Salt River Valley. Also, obviously important for ethnic heritage in regards to the Yaki community there and also for the Hispanic-descended Mexican-American community of the town of Guadalupe, and the fact that it continues to be an important religious site for the community. And this is some of the things I've just mentioned before. The site was first organized as a historic settlement of Yaki people around 1898, when it was purchased by the Catholic Church. It continues to be a vital locus for cultural and family connectivity, both for the Yaki and the Mexican-American community of Guadalupe. It's important locus of ongoing religious practice for the community. And in terms of its importance to the city of Tempe, it's an important marker of the multicultural history of the city and helping to acknowledge and in some ways tell the story of the Yaki experience in Tempe and also the Mexican-American experience. And so that's essentially what I have.
Sounds good. Thank you, Doctor. Really appreciate the presentation. I've got a couple of councilmembers I know who have comments. I'm going to start with Councilmember Garland and then follow up with Councilmember Hodge.
I just want to say, I absolutely loved reading the information that you, the history that you presented or you gave to us in the packet that we were able to read. I knew about the cemetery and I knew about the mound, but I did not know all the history. I was fascinated. So thank you so much for presenting that. And I think it's something that we should all, that lots of people should read about. So what I thought was, I don't know if you've done this before, but to reach out to the Tempe History Museum and talk to Brenda Abney there and maybe see, I would love to see the information that you gave us put into maybe even a little tiny stapled booklet that had some of the pictures. So if somebody wanted to know, I mean, I'm sitting next to Councilmember Navarro and we were talking about how our head mentioned that he didn't even know that the cemetery was there. And I don't think the majority of people in Tempe know that it's there and the cultural significance of that area. So it would be great if you were able to share that information with the history museum with pictures so that if anybody was interested, they'd be able to go down there and find that. So with that, I just want to say. So with that, I just want to say that I'm going to be really happy to support this next time it comes up before council.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I feel the same way. I've known about this cemetery for many, many years. I've been a part of it. I've been a part of the Day of the Dead. This is one of the first years I didn't support it. I wasn't there for it. Usually, I'm there. I agree with you about bringing the history to the Tempe Museum, but I know that the town of Guadalupe already has that pack already done. So all we have to do is just get a copy of that and bring that over to the city of Tempe. They have all the information. It's part of their, they, it's enriched in their heritage. And I think that because it affects the town of Guadalupe, but it also affects our city of our, it's our kids in our schools, their families, it's just pure history, and I can't wait to support it, because this is something that should have been done many years ago. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Any of the councilmembers' comments or questions? All right, hearing none? All right, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the City Council on this item? Speakers have up to three minutes. Okay, I don't see any. I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Just want to state once again that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for December 31st, December 31st, December 1st, 2022. I know, I know Carla was like, Cory, not December 31st. No one's going to be here December 31st. New Year. All right, the next item under the section is 8B4, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 2 of the Tempe City Code relating to officers and employees by updating the deputy city manager roles, including adding a chief deputy city manager and an assistant city manager by amending Chapter 3, Chapter 2, Article 3 relating to departments by establishing the Communication and Marketing Office, Diversity Equity and Inclusion Office, Education Career and Family Services Office, and Government Relations Office, and renaming the Human Services Department to the Community Health and Human Services Department, and the Strategic Management and Diversity Office to the Strategic Management and Innovation Office, and by amending Chapter 2, Article 5 relating to boards, commissions, et cetera. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the City Council on this item? I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
I did hear that, could you get that again?
Yeah, I'll read it one more time. No. The second, and I'll read this one. The second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for December 1st, 2022. Thank you, Councilmember Garland, because some of these are long, so. The next item under the section is 8B5, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance to transfer a portion of the unencumbered budget appropriation from the Human Services Department to the Education Career and Family Services Office to provide sufficient budget appropriation to enable this new office to perform its various functions. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the City Council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Yeah, Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes, how large would this be, this department be? Or is it? I guess I'm confused about why, if, maybe the city manager can speak to this a little bit. Thank you.
I'm sorry, the question is, how large is the Human Services Department? How large is the Education Career and Family Services Office?
The education.
I don't have an exact number. I want to say probably, well, if you include, it includes Kid Zone, so all of the Kid Zone staff would be in there, which would increase the numbers for at least temporary staff significantly. We can get an exact number. I'll work with Naomi and her staff.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else, any further comments or questions? All right, just want to reiterate, second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for December 1st, 2022. The last item under the section is 8B6, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance to transfer the portion of the unencumbered budget appropriation from the City Manager's Office to the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Office, the Government Relations Office, and the Communication and Marketing Office to provide sufficient budget appropriation to enable these new offices to perform their various functions. Are there any speakers in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay, once again, second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for December 1st, 2022. Next up, we have second public, items for second public hearing and final adoption. These items were read and introduced on October 20th, 2022, and votes on these items will be taken tonight. The first item under the section is 8C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving a development and disposition agreement for developer-owned real property located at 1122 East Vista del Lago, and authorizing the mayor to execute a development agreement, one or more deeds, leases, and related documents with Lincoln Property Company, National LLC, to effect such transaction. Council, any questions for staff on this item? We had a pretty lengthy presentation at the last meeting.
Move to approve.
Actually, I've got to do the public hearing first, so I'll have you withdraw for a second there. Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, if I must. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I guess I will look to my colleagues again.
Move to approve.
Been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. I think Vice Mayor Adams is not going to be too happy about that, Councilmember Hodge.
Yeah, no kidding.
Sneaking in there, I see. Any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none. It's not allowing me to vote here.
There is.
Well, mine is not. That's weird. Okay, I will vote aye then, and that item passes unanimously seven to zero. Oh, yeah, I was on the wrong mode. Thank you. That's why I was like, why isn't it not working? All right, the next item under the section is 8C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending the city code relating to City of Tempe Park and Preserve rules by amending Sections 23-38, 23-40A, 23-110, and 23-111 relating to authority to establish additional prohibited activities. Any questions for staff on this item? Anyone in the audience wishing to address the City Council on this item? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a portion of a waterline easement located east of Rural Road and south of the Sixth Street alignment. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. And that item passes seven to zero. I have to say, this is always the fun part of the agenda for me as well, council. The next item under the section is 8C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of portions of right-of-way located on Vista del Lago Drive, Pier 202, adjacent to Lot 6, situated in the north half of Section 14, Township 1, North Range 4 East, Gila and Salt River Base, and Meridian Maricopa County, Arizona. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the City Council on this item? Okay, I will close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
Move to approve.
Been moved by Councilmember Hodge and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That item also passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C5, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 12 of the Tempe City Code by amending Articles 2 through 3 Tempe City Code relating to drainage and flood control, by amending Sections 12-16 through 12-35 relating to floodplain management, amending Section 12-36 relating to floodways, and repealing Sections 12-37 through 12-41 relating to the Salt River Flood Channel. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments, discussion, or questions? Been moved by Vice Mayor Adams and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote. That item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C6, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located at 2200 West Alameda Drive, which is Tempe Diablo Stadium, and authorizing the mayor or his designated executor the agreement and related, an easement agreement and related documents. Anyone in the council wishing to address, anyone in the council, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, any comments or discussion?
Move to approve.
Been moved by Councilmember Keating and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. Somehow, my vote is already still up there, which is kind of fun. I mean, it read my mind properly, but, Councilmember Garland? Ah! And that item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8C7, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located at 7845 South Rural Road, serving the Carver Sewer Pumping Station, and authorizing the mayor or his designated executor the easement agreement and related documents. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the City Council on this item?
Move to approve.
Okay, public hearing is closed, then moved by Vice Mayor Adams. Have a second. Seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote. That item passes seven to zero. That brings us to item number nine, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I will now call upon the councilmembers for their comments this evening, and once again, going in alphabetical order, I will start with Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several announcements this evening. The first announcement is about Kiwanis North Outreach. I'm very excited about this. Our Parks Department is looking at Kiwanis Park to do some remodeling and things, and if you're interested, there's going to be a public meeting also at the Kiwanis North Playground on Saturday, November 19th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. And some of the plans that they're thinking about is envisioning replacement of, and improvement for an inclusive playground that's fully accessible, and new lakeside concession building and boat storage, new restroom building. Those of you that have been in that restroom, it is time for a little upgrade here, lighting for our north soccer fields, and I'm very pleased to announce that we're going to look at the development of the northwest area for Dog Park with three separate zones, one for small dogs and one for young dogs, and the third zone is for adult, mature dogs. Is that correct? Yes, thank you. The public can also go to add their comments, tempe.gov/Forum. Hi, Arlene.
Senior dogs.
Senior dogs. There you go, senior dogs, right.
The immature dogs.
Right, exactly. Stats would probably fall into that category. Yes, and another announcement I have is, actually, I have three announcements this evening, Mr. Mayor. The second one is Park Monument Signs Outreach. This is another area where our signs are really aging, and they don't, can't even really see them very well. So the Parks Department is going to be updating our signs for the parks, and so you can go to tempe.gov/Forum again if you'd like to discuss this with the city staff and give them your ideas. So I'm sure we'll be having a very inclusive process with that, and I appreciate it. My last announcement tonight is Tempe Veterans Day Parade. I love a parade. So come down on November 11th and enjoy our wonderful parade and honor those men and women who put their lives in danger to protect our country. The Tempe Veterans Day Parade will start at ASU Gamage Auditorium at 10:00 a.m., and will head north on Mill Avenue. It's really a fun parade, so I really recommend it. And you can stay with us after the parade is over and go to the park and enjoy the Resource Village that will feature nonprofits and other organizations dedicated to serving our active-duty military veterans and their families. As my father is a veteran, I'm very excited about the Veterans Day Parade. Hope to see you there. Thank you. That ends my announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Appreciate it. Let me go next to Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce the very first meeting of the newly-named Sustainability and Economic Vitality Council Committee. The first meeting will be on Monday, November 7th, here in council chambers at 2:00 p.m. Details are on the website listed, including the agenda. We'll have options if you'd like to attend virtually, but you are invited to join us here in person. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Chin. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
Thank you. City of Tempe employees in the room, oh, I have your attention. All veterans, will you please stand? Do we have any veterans in the room? Please stand. Thank you, Ms. Ma. All right, well, then you are representing for all of the city and Tempe employees who are veterans. You're going to rep all of them. So I just want to make sure that you are invited, invite all of your veteran friends. City and Tempe employees, there's a Veterans Breakfast, which is really fun, 5:30 in the morning to 8:30 on November 10th. Please RSVP to Abe if you can come. His information is on here, and you will be getting some more information about that. They'll be handing out shirts. The breakfast is amazing. You will be served by some wonderful people. We're looking forward to having you there and honoring you, so we hope that you will come and bring all your friends.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Next up, Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you. Oh, I guess my first one is, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm talking like I'm at home. Okay.
You did have that very casual, like, look.
Yeah, look, look. So I didn't say it last time. I forgot to mention that I had my breakfast with Berdeta. It had over 50 people on the, who attended. It was a robust discussion on education. All the public school superintendents were there, Dr. Minneville, Dr., oh, God, James Driscoll, and Dr. Tanyas was there. So it was a phenomenal event, and we also got to, we got to also talk to our wonderful staff. Naomi brought her staff for education, and they did a phenomenal presentation. So I just want to thank everybody who came and my Tempe city, my Tempe employees, they did a phenomenal job. So thank you so much on that one. And on the 31st, I went to the SRP Gaming Luncheon, and that was phenomenal. Councilmember Garland, you were missed. They talked about you, so just wanted you to know that personally, that they, we were missed. I told them that I was not you, but I would be a second in.
We are sisters.
We are sisters in that, so just wanted to do that. It was a, it was a beautiful event. The performance that they had were phenomenal. The music, I mean, everything about it, it just, it gave me such, it gave me goosebumps and chills just watching it. So anytime next year that they do it, I advise all our councilmembers, it would be great to be there, because it's something that you don't want to miss. It is something, yeah, I enjoyed it. I just want to cry thinking about how well it was. And my last is, we do have override coming up. Please research your ballot and just, and go out there and check out the measurements. And also, everybody, please vote. It's coming up November, this Tuesday, if you haven't voted already.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Appreciate it. Next up, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to take the opportunity to publicly recognize Naomi Farrell and Marie Raymond for all the work they've done on Tempe Pre, leading us to get the award that we received. So though I accept it on behalf of the city, it was not my efforts that made the program so successful, so congratulations to you both and all of the staff that made it possible. And then I'd also like to thank, or wish Tempe Veterans a Happy Veterans Day. Thank you for your service, everyone who is serving and has served and will serve in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. First, I want to give a kind of big shout-out to Tempe Fire Medical Rescue. I had a resident, and I think a lot of us know her, Kathy Mayorga. Her mom recently passed, well, back in the summer, and, but she just wanted me to tell you guys and tell our fire department what a blessing that department has been for not only her, but her mom. They've had a call a few times to her house to help her out with various things, and towards the end of her life, she expressed the appreciation of Tempe Fire Medical Rescue and what the service they provided. But not only that, a good conversation with the mom and making her laugh as they came in the visit. I think she kind of flirted with you guys for a little bit, but for the most part. But also with Kathy, she's a tremendous resident for us for various things. She really does give her heart to this city and trying to make this city better, but she's also helped various councilmembers, or maybe a lot of councilmembers, out in various ways, and she is a true blessing as a resident for us. And I just want to say to Kathy, thank you, and thank you for letting us know about your mom and about Tempe Fire Medical Rescue, but thank you more importantly.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. I don't have any comments this evening, because everybody actually talked about mine, so I will, oh, yes, please.
Sorry, I left that there. I also want to say, backing up a little bit, last week, we had Dia de los Muertos, a celebration here at the Hackett House. It was a great event, working with the Mexican consulate. It was a kind of a quick, impromptu deal, but I think it's an event that we're going to probably embrace here in the city of Tempe. I think this is a great reach-out for our Hispanic Um, I think this is a great reach-out for our Hispanic heritage, but not only that, for the culture of not only Tempe, but for the region. I think this is an event that we're going to build on, and I'm very proud to, that we got that in there. The other thing is, um, I always, I want to try to start giving a little update on the next concert that's coming up, and this is one that I think I would attend, uh, the Marquee Theater. You got the Funk Junkies and the Boogie Nights coming in November twenty-third at seven-thirty, and that's in the PM. And, uh, yeah, that's better. Now, that's going to be a fun little event. You're talking about right into Thanksgiving, got a little family in town, come on over to the Marquee, enjoy some great music, and, uh, have a good, uh, little event there. And then get out to vote, and happy Veterans Day.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro. All right, I will move on then to item number ten, public appearances. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to address the City Council? And if so, please come forward and state your name and city of residence for the record. Seeing none, that moves us to item number eleven, which is adjournment. The next regular city council meeting is scheduled for December first, twenty twenty-two. We are adjourned. Council, we need to finish an executive session upstairs. Have a good night, everyone.